Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Before we get started tonight, we will do a couple of public hearings really quickly. The city of Greensburg's budget for 2021 was submitted to Gateway by Greedy Financial Group last week. Is there anyone here to publicly comment on the city's 2021 budget? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for 2021 budget.
Yeah, you just issued the minutes, showed this reform, like, looked at it, colored from comments, and then this one.
Any motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
Sir.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Up next, we have a public hearing for the Greensburg Community Schools Corporation budget for 2021. That was submitted by them and their financial institution and was available on Gateway. But is anyone here to comment on the Greensburg Community School Corporation's 2021 budget as as of tonight? Seeing none, would take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Today is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, the time being 7:00 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. This time, please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary and anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. Before we do begin, I'd like to amend the agenda real quick. Under Old Business, we need to add the second reading for Ordinance 2020-3. That is for the fire control ordinance. You should have received a copy of that. We voted on the last month.
Yeah.
2020-13. Sorry if I didn't say that. Okay.
So you...
Motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
So second?
Second.
Motion made by Jamie, seconded by Vieta. All those in favor to amend the agenda of 2020-13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Brenda, will you please call the roll?
Jamie King.
Here.
Vieta McKenzie.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rick M. Sweller.
Here.
And Darryl Poland.
Darryl is intending to join late. You all should have received a copy of the minutes from August 3rd, and then our special session was the budget on August 6th. Motion been presented to you. Any amendments or corrections? If not, would take a motion to approve those cast presented.
Second.
Moved by Vieta, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We will then proceed to Old Business. Street Commissioner Mark Klosterkamp, Ordinance 2020-5.
Good evening. It's the second reading for Ordinance 2020-5. This is an additional appropriation from Riverboat for some major repairs that we found in 2016 that need to be done on First Street. Those have been completed this time. And like I said, we've had to read the last note this time. I'm sure we'll second read.
Make a motion to pass 2020-5 on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. 2020-6.
This is the amendment to the ordinance, Chapter 93, for the garbage trash ordinances for the city of Greensburg. This also is the second reading for the ordinance that was passed in the city last month.
Make a... I'll make a motion to pass 2020-6 on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Vieta for 2020-6. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? For the record, Darryl Poland has joined us. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Brenda?
Can I just sit here first?
Sure.
Okay, so I wanted to present the amendment to Ordinance 2013-3, the ordinance number being 2020-7. It is the definition and establishing remedies for the fire for public nuisance and unkept properties. We have a first reading on August 3rd and it passed at that time.
Any further questions, Brenda, on that one? If not, would take a motion to present or pass 2020-7.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Darryl, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Ron, good evening.
Good evening. Ordinance 2020-10 is a revision to the intersection control at the intersection of Ireland Street and Fourth Street. You passed this on first reading in August. The change would be to allow Fourth Street to be a through street with Ireland Street stopping in the northbound direction. The southbound approach, the former southbound approach to that intersection is now the driveway from the old water treatment plant. This ordinance, if passed, would become effective upon the engineers for the water treatment plant determination of substantial completion of the water plant. We have an excessive amount of parking that's occurring in there right now. We recommend waiting until that construction is nearly complete.
Okay. Take a motion to pass 2020-10 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Kevin, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. 2020-11.
This is an ordinance changing the intersection control at the intersection of Warren Street and Davidson Street. That would be to permit Davidson Street to be pre-flowing a through street with Warren Street stopping. That was passed on first reading last month. This particular ordinance would become effective upon passage and, I guess, recording.
What's the street name? Does Warren go across the street there? And what was the road? What's the...
Warren Street, if you're coming from the east, is Hendrick Street. And when you get to Warren Street, it...
Turns around. What's the street, um...
Hendrick.
Does it...
Thanks to live around the...
Does it look around?
Yeah.
The church.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Hendrick.
So Warren literally just splits it. Is that what? Is that how that...
If you're going north on Warren, when you get to Hendrick's, it kind of lies off to the northeast, comes on up, and stops, ends at Davidson.
That's on... That will be Hendrick's gonna stay there and stop somewhere.
Yes.
We are not changing the Hendrick-Davidson intersection control. Just one.
Just taking out.
Just taking out the Davidson.
All those in favor of the motion for 2020-11 to pass on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The amendment to the agenda fire ordinance, 2020-13, is the fire ordinance. This allows for a better enforcement of our fire pit ordinance we did earlier this year. This is second reading. You should have received a copy of it this evening on your desk. It was not posted for the month, but you already reviewed it. Any further questions? If not, would take a motion to present, pass that on second reading as well.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Rick, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Up next, new business. Brian Robbins, here at Cater County Greensburg Economic Development Board. He has two projects for us. Good evening, Brian.
Good. Hello, thanks for having me. The first project, we call Project Blast. It is an investment in the local auto manufacturer of Indiana. It's a spending of $110 million. Probably six of that in real estate and 104 impermeable property. This project, 20 new employees, around $1 million in wages total. And essentially, the project is there to increase productivity and technology out at the plant. We have two representatives on the hearing, Howard and Alanda White, who I will allow to speak a little bit about the project and about the manufacturing.
Good evening. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Brian. Members of the city council, Mayor Marsh, and city leaders.
Good evening. My name is Randy Powell, and the chief administrator at Auto Manufacturing Indiana. Appreciate your time this evening. We began production in Greensburg in 2008, so we've been here quite a while. Currently employ 2,500 associates, and we produce approximately 250,000 vehicles a year, Civics, Insight Hybrids, CRVs, and CRV hybrids. The $110 million is a total of several different investments that we will be making at the plant over the next three years as we prepare for the future at our Greensburg facility. This building expansion at our plant will be approximately 63,160 square feet. Expansion will be used to create additional space to support new production technology, maximize onsite operations, and prepare for increased production complexity. There also is a personal property investment that Brian mentioned. This includes new production technologies, new model equipment, and plant asset modernization. The goal is to further enhance the future competitiveness of our facility that will occur over the next two to three company fiscal years. Given the... I appreciate getting the opportunity to speak about that. I have a little bit of another update, but I don't have any questions before I move on.
Sure. So, any questions for Randy? I also asked him if he could give us a little update for Honda as well. And Alanda's here, who has personally quite a contact out there quite often, so we appreciate you being here, Alanda. Any questions for Randy on the abatement before we proceed into just an update? I think this is a great investment in our local community, $110 million. It's obviously a big number, shows the strength of Auto Manufacturing Indiana, choosing to invest here, when it's still been done in Ohio, so we are grateful for that. If there's no questions or comments from the board, the council, I would take a motion to approve your request for a tenure abatement.
For both.
Correct, Brian?
For both.
Real and... For both, real and personal, I certainly... It did score that at our city meeting, and it did pass as that being the recommendation. Anything else on that, Brian?
Sorry, I missed. How many additional jobs?
Twenty additional jobs.
Twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for investing in our community.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I'll make a motion to vote. Do we have numbers for...
Yes. 2020-17. You need to...
Yeah.
2020-18.
2020-17 is already used.
Okay. 2020-17 is used, so we'll go 2020-18 and 2020-19?
We're doing resolution.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Resolution 17. Seventeen and eighteen?
Seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen resolutions.
Do we need to do a separate person?
Yeah, just to make...
I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2020-17.
Second. Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Darryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2020-18.
Your second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So a little update, if you don't mind?
Yeah. Super quick update. Basically, what I want to talk about just related to our restart of production after the COVID-19, our return to work plan. As we prepare to restart production in May, we're really focused our efforts on protection and reducing the risk to our associates. We refitted a return to work safety plan. That was actually part of the governor's order, and it's also normally how we would prepare for such a large event anyway. The plan was mail to each associate's home before the restart. We wanted associates to understand what to expect when they came back, including all the changes they were going to see. We did things like stagger our shift starts, lunch and break times. We have modified our common areas and rerouted exits. And where possible, we also adjusted certain processes in the workstations to accommodate the social distancing that's required in a new state of things. Our associates also have been very helpful in offering suggestions on how to improve our processes as we move along and help us continue to improve our manufacturing environment. All these things were done to help make sure our associates were safe. We have been closely following the guidance and directions provided by the local, state, and federal government officials, as well as the top health organizations, including Indiana State Department of Health and the Cater County Health Support. Regarding production, we had a phased approach as we returned to production. We're glad to say that we're now back to basically our full production plan of 1,000 units per day. So, really appreciate everybody's time tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My next presentation is one that is connected to something that we reviewed in our last meeting upon the approval and reexamination of the S B 1 submitted for the Pizza Craft project by Mr. Whitaker. He noticed that not all of his investments in the property were included in the cost that was on the S B 1. I sent out the revised S B 1 to everyone, and it added another, say, $300,000 to the amount, and he is like, he would like that to be resubmitted and replace the last one submitted. And is also asking a tenure abatement, as he did with the previous S B 1. We know Mr. Whitaker has made a tremendous amount of investments in that, in those properties along the way, and is the lead developer in that area. And he, especially in light of the current economic times, he's asking for additional help, which is why he states that he wishes to request the tenure abatement instead of the second that he was granted after last meeting. This was brought up again when we met with Alka-Honda, and we treated it like it was a new one. It was re-scored, according to the guidelines that we've been using and trying to implement. And it scored in the, what year? The seventh year.
Okay.
So both scored.
Correct.
Right.
The first abatement actually scored in the sixth. It was just short of being seven. We bumped it up to seven. But then this one scored, I think, just... They clearly bumped it into the seven, but not into the eight. I know that I had several conversations with Mr. Whitaker, I think, over the course of this process, and I think his concern is, based on the economic climate, you know, he's looking for every advantage he can, you know, I mean, just trying to make things successful. Especially trying to invest in a restaurant in this current climate would be a... It's a tough venture, I think. I know it scored in a seven. One thing I think that we do need to do is, we've got our scoring system, I think, is appropriate. I like the scoring system, but Brian's actually emailed that out to everybody on the council today. Probably haven't had a chance to look at it. You may not even have seen it, because it didn't come out till late this afternoon. But what I was hoping we might be able to do is create a resolution next month to where we could adopt that scoring system, or that way you have a chance to look it over, maybe make some suggestions or, you know, comments on the scoring system, so that we can make a resolution maybe next month to adopt it as an official scoring system.
Again, the object of the scoring system is to take the subjectivity out of these random words and everybody can be evaluated on a level of plan. There's still some flexibility in them. I don't want to restrict us from being able to possibly, you know, when we set up our larger projects or very impactful projects, but I don't think he feels that there's enough flexibility in the scoring system that would allow for that.
And to be fair, we did take into effect COVID when we put a scoring system together. That was not, or the effects that it might have on our economy and things like that. We didn't consider that when we put that in.
I think I'm hearing both of you, say, oh, Brian and Jamie, you know, talking about the climate, the economic climate. I don't believe Jeff has slowed down any at all. In fact, we've got a lot of projects going out there, and I see a lot of projects that are coming to completion. Well, I say a lot, in the gas station Sonic across the highway there, and then the medical building. Looks like he's progressed on that. My personal opinion is I think consideration needs to be done, or needs to be considered because of the... Second motion.
Motion for a tenure abatement to Pizza Craft, been made by Kevin, seconded by Darryl. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Up next, we... That's Brian. Up next, we have Eric and his crew from DLZ Architecture and Engineering. They have been working with us on our city hall project that we have discussed for quite a while, stemming from A-Back Systems and the keys for that. So they have a short presentation for us. Ron and I have sort of been spearheading this project internally over the last several months, really. And so they're here to give us an update and sort of tell us what's next and how we proceed. And then I've got a couple of things that I would like to let my group's on, probably head on to the next phase. So Eric, if you could just, uh, over here.
Please give us a little update on yourself, who you've got with you, and where we are and where we're going.
All right. Good evening, Eric. And I am Eric, France's principal architect with DLZ. Also, we have Eric Acker, mechanical engineer, and Robert Willie from Electrical, who's going to be talking to you a little bit tonight about your renovation of the project. Y'all have the handouts of what's going to be presented here. I'm going to do a little bit of overall scope work, then Eric, the other Eric, and Robert's going to talk about their areas, and I'll come back and finish it up. But a little bit about the overall scope is, your building here is approximately 33,500 square feet, plus or minus just a few. We're going to be renovating basically the entire building, all the interiors of the building from that. A big part of what this project is, is to improve your mechanical system of the building, the heating, the cooling, the ventilation, as well as the plumbing aspects of the building. Eric will go into the details, and Robert will talk about the electrical system upgrades throughout the building. It's all a result of, everything we're really doing is based off of the initial part of doing the mechanical and the electrical aspects of it. With that, we'll be doing some general finishes upgrades. More details in a few minutes. The entire roof will be replaced, removed all the way down to the existing deck, and then to start over with that. There's a little bit of site development that's part of it, and then one of the things that Eric will also be talking about is some of the potential. And I have to say potential because we're working through all the aspects of it, is trying to look at some CARES Act monies to be able to do part of this. Working through some of the details on it, but there's an opportunity for us to benefit from that, but we've got to get the project awarded and some things done before the end of the year. But again, we're working on those items, but it's a unique opportunity that, working with Greensburg, the DLZ, we're trying to work through this together such that it's good for everyone from that aspect. So I'm going to turn it over, and Eric's going to talk about the mechanical aspects of next. If you've got any questions, please just let us know, Andy, at any time.
Good evening. I'm Eric, Eric Acker, mechanical engineer in this project. This building's got some challenges. Brandon mentions, we walk in, it's always cold around 11:00. We know you have humidity issues in this building. Ron will tell you that you pull out five gallons of water a day from dehumidifiers. There are fixes for that, and we're going to talk about those. The building originally, obviously, was a school with classroom ventilators in each room. Yeah, right there. Those were installed in the 50s, that's 1950's technology, when we didn't cool classrooms, all we did was heat them. So when we came back in the 80s or 90s, and what ever happened, and put a cooling coil in there, it doesn't wring out the water. That's why you have humidity issues in buildings, too. So the solution to that is to put a single air hammer down in the mechanical room that'll bring all your fresh air and then distribute it to the building. You treat all that fresh air once in the mechanical room, wring out all the water, and then distribute it to the rest of the building. So what we propose to do is remove those classroom ventilators and put a fan coil for each of these, what used to be the classrooms, one of them in the corridor, to serve each space. That way, you all keep the amount of fresh air that you need, which is critical for meantime health and safety standards. And we temper that air back in the mechanical room where we can treat it all at once. As part of that, the boilers down in the mechanical room are, they've seen better days. The chiller is, you can no longer purchase the refrigerant for that chiller. Ron tells me that the school wants to buy the chiller for y'all when we take it out because the refrigerant has the value. The school has seen the chiller. They're still using it. They want the refrigerator now. But if that chiller were to fail tomorrow, you'd have a tough time getting refrigerant to repair it. So, Eric talked about some of the CARES type stuff. One of the things that we can do to improve the health and sanitation in the building is put UV lights. The other thing, they call them NPVI, non-polarization bipolar ionization, something like that, at each fan coil. And basically, that kills any fungus, mold, germs, whatever, and as the air circulates through there, so you get better air quality in the building. That will help alleviate any mold-type concerns. In the multi-purpose room, Eric will talk a little bit about the plan down there. We haven't developed that too much because we need to know what direction y'all want to go. But basically, there's an air handle that serves that multi-purpose room. It's seen better days as well, so the plan is replace that. Depending on where all the funds work out, right now, all these classroom ventilators, there's a tunnel around the perimeter of the building. That's the way they built these classrooms, that building back in the 50s. And all the pipes come up from underneath. It's always best if you have the funds to remove all that stuff so that you're left with a clean building when you're done. The new pipe that we're running over in the corridor is to serve the new fan coils. But as an alternate bid, if there's funds available, we can go ahead and take those pipes out. If you have to do it, if you have money, that would be great.
Keep one thing in mind, that tunnel's not something you walk through, it's something more really scrunch over, you crawl through in a lot of spaces.
Well, it's five feet four tall, which is right there, and then the pipes hang down from below, so you really have about four feet that you can have a way to leave it. We're going to do some, we propose to do some things for the plumbing here. Number one, Eric will talk about the other part of it, but as far as, your water service now comes in by the front door, which was great back then, I suppose, but one of the intents of this project is to create an intersection area, and we need that space for other things. So the water service would have to move down to the mechanical room, we're moving a lot of it in the first place. So we propose to move that from the front of the building to the mechanical room. A lot of the classrooms at the east side of the building have coiled fixtures that are no longer used. A lot of them are just laying there. Anything that's not being reused, we'll take out and cap off and plonk it. Again, for, we, for all the public laboratories, we like to go in and put in hardwired sensor-operated faucets that you don't have to touch, touch the bottom, you just put your hand in, you're thinking water runs. That way, you don't have to touch it, you can spread the heat, just that way. The fixtures in the north end, I think you all know, that was the younger classroom space back then. The toilets are really, really low, for little kids. So we propose to raise them up and make them available. The water here, I probably will tell you all, we need a water softener here to maintain the longevity of the systems. Couple of alternates, again, you don't have to use it. If you happen to have enough money, we'll do it as a bid alternate and see where the numbers come in. But there's the technology that is out there now to produce domestic type of water through a solar system, put that on the roof, roof will support it. And it costs more upfront, but saves on your electricity down the road. And another alternate bid that we'll talk, I'll let Eric talk about a little bit more, this building is not spring. There's no sprinklers in here. Our code people say you don't have to do that in this kind of renovation, but it's a good idea. So again, when we redo the water entrance of the mechanical room, size it for a spring or system, so that if you decide not to do it now, you always have that option in the So that if, if you decide not to do it now, you always had that option in the future. You won't have to bring in the service for that. So I guess that's, that's my pitch on the mechanical plumbing systems. Are there any questions I'd be glad to talk about? I, I could stand up here for a while and talk about this. I, I don't, I don't get to lead very many projects.
You're pretty excited.
I don't, usually I follow along whatever he does and it's like, yeah, give me some plug. Are there any questions? Can I help anybody? With that, I'll turn it over to Robert to talk about the electric.
Okay, and that's, uh, is that my horrible, what you hear on the project? Just as Eric said earlier, my work is already in there. So going through and replacing all the HVAC systems, all the ceilings, we're going to down some of them. We're going to replace all the lights. That's going to replace all the lights and we also replace all the light controls. Part of that could be used as code, which we used to, because we put on night controls. All the offices and everything, I'll put in, uh, adjustable controls. So we have dimmable lights everywhere. And also as part of the system, I think, I want to protect all that. I want to put a surge protection on main, which we have a surge here. It's currently setting in the panel in the back room right behind us here. But that cord replaces in the building. So you have nothing to do with it. Also, as I had ceilings down, I'm going to replace the wireless system. I understand there's multiple systems in the building right now. So we're going to replace that if we want with the system in there and also take care of, uh, as part of that. Powering up the HVAC equipment has already replaced it. I've got a few other communication changes I might replace with the fire alarm system. It's currently twenty-plus years old and no longer serviceable. So if we do need to add anything to it at this time, we may have a good time to replace. Uh, we're just being replaced the control panel and the Nancy panel that sits in the lobby. All the existing devices we were going to need. As you can see in the walls, those are there. And, uh, one of the biggest things I will do is I will replace the AV system that is currently in this room. Yes. Yes. New sound system, new microphones, new video displays, new inputs, the whole works. Uh, that we're also looking at is also, uh, including the new room that's been made in Janey. Oh, yeah. And along with that, goes to replace all of the communications wiring in the, in the past section. Helps the, uh, that, Daryl, Eric, does it show up?
Uh-oh.
Good.
Alright.
I have just a question on the, uh, fire, fire alarm control system. What's a typical life expectancy on that?
About twenty years.
Hey, I apologize. This, uh, doesn't show up quite as well as I, I just say you had to expect it.
It shows up all on page one.
Yeah, you've got it on your options. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the, the overall general aspects of the building. Um, you know, I have to admit, the first time I came into the building, met with the mayor, met with Ron. I was impressed with the overall condition of, especially with the age of your building, how you maintain your facility. So, you know, Greensburg, you've done a good job on that, but it's just like with any other project, anything, whether it's your home, your car, whatever, at some point in time, you need to make some improvements to the overall facility, and that's what we're here doing. Um, and I think that it, with the emphasis really being on the, the mechanical system, the electrical system of the building, as I would say, the infrastructure. Um, there's obviously, as a follow-up of that, there's a lot of general scope of work items that I will talk about. Uh, first and foremost, one of the things that you're going to see is that when a project starts, we're going to totally vacate the building. And at least that's what the plan is right now. Move everyone out of the building such that we're able to come into the building and do all of the renovation work really in one phase of the project in lieu of having multiple phases of moving different parts of people around in different areas of the building to make that work. So that will make a lot of sense as Eric and Robert talk about their scope of work, of how all that can come together with that. So starting off in the building, if you're a visitor coming to the building, one of the things that you're going to see first off is that we're creating a new sense of entrance or a new entry security point, uh, when you first come into the building. So that's inviting, but also at the same time providing a point of a security ass, access point as you come into the building. So there will be some rework that's in the front. Um, Eric spoke about where the water service is, where there's some IT items there. And that's going to be relocated. Coming in the building is just on the left-hand side. That's going to be more where the, the, the building receptionist will be sitting at that point. As you come into the building, there's going to be new finishes throughout the building. You know, we're looking at hard surface materials in lieu of a lot of the carpets. Part of the CARES Act monies that we're able to potentially look at. We're looking at creating more conference space within the building. So when you first come in to the building, to the left, uh, past where the receptionists be, uh, there's more of, um, like where Main Street is, there can be a conference room in that area to be able to, as you first come into the building, have a conference point, um, at that location. As Robert and Eric also pointed out, we're doing some work in the gymnasium, or what I'll call the gymnasium or the multi-purpose room with that. Uh, we'll take the, uh, the western half or western third of the space, put in like a paired panel partition, um, that the roof structure can support, thankfully. Um, be able to look at that as where it can be divided off into a third, basically, to, um, have another conference space, uh, for larger group meetings than what's, uh, would be the one off the main lobby. Um, as you go up, the, uh, the west side of the building, it's typically, it's general finishes that we're going throughout. There'll be an emphasis up on the end for the, a, a training room. That can be used by firefighters, even placed, but used by firefighters and look at it more as a training space. Classroom, slight training space that they're able to do work in. Coming down the corridor, coming this way, there's at the end of the utilities and the court treasure, there's some office areas, some administrative offices that we need to add into those spaces to be able to make it, um, um, compatible to the, the items, what they're doing. But I think that the, the emphasis, excuse me, as you walk throughout the building, is you're going to see new ceilings, you're going to see walls that are painted, new floor finishes. Some of the door hardware that is, um, still the knob type instead of the lever type. We wanted to improve that to be ADA compliant, not a lot of that, but we need to make sure that that's taken care of. So with that, that's really the interior aspects of the building. I can go as much detail as you would like. Um, but then also, as I noted earlier, we're going to replace the roof. You know, we're going to spend a fair amount of money. Last thing we want is to have a leaky roof. So, you know, that's going to be one of the first things that's done. Get a complete tear-off, come back again with new insulation, going to meet the energy codes as well as a new, uh, we'll do a twenty-year roof, but then also an alternate to do a thirty-year roof. So you have a warranty for thirty years on that. Replace all the fascia, that's the metal trim at the edge of the roof, such that, you know, that's all up to speed, uh, for the next, hopefully for the thirty years with that. Any general discussions about the scope of work from a, a finishes point of view of the building? Okay. Turning to page eight is some of the hard construction estimates. And I want to point out a few things with this is that the next page, you're going to see our, our schedule for the overall project. And that's what this estimate is really dependent on, is following through that with a November forty-third bid date for the project. It's a single unified bid, there's going to be, there'll be multiple contractors, but they will all be bidding, all work under one single contract at this point in time. The building's going to be vacated. There's obviously costs to move, is even greater cost if you stay in the building and try to occupy the building during construction. If any of you have ever went through a project like that, whether it's your home or anything else, or business you work in, you know what that's like. One of the things that we also have included is because things do come up during design, uh, things get added, things get deleted, whatever. But we also have a ten percent design allowance that's already built into that number, such that if nothing else is added, no additional cost to that, that overall project cost, the probable cost can come down ten percent from that. It's kind of like the savings account. We've got to have some monies in there just in case, hey, we need to add something in some area from that perspective or not. We've got typical general conditions, overhead and profit included. And then some loose equipment things like maybe chairs, uh, maybe a desk or something that's, you know, portable. Uh, that's typically something that's provided outside the project. And I know that the project or the building has been through multiple renovations over the years. Um, if there's any monies for any hidden asbestos type items, environmental issues, whatever, um, we'll address those items as they come about. So what we've done is that site, um, I, I should mention site work. And some of the site work, the concrete's, uh, concrete out here on Washington is also on the end of the building here, we will be replacing that. So our overall estimate is, uh, just below four million dollars from that aspect. Excuse me. So project schedule and design and bidding. What we're looking at is today, we're presenting what's called schematic design on the project. Um, at the end of our presentation, um, we, um, we asking for approval of this such that we can go into the construction documents, which is the next phase of the project. That's where we develop the blueprints, you might say, the, all the drawings, all the specifications for the bidding purposes. We would release those documents. Um, you know, around the first of November, we'd have a pre-bid meeting, have contractors walk through the building. We'd issue any kind of addenda to the contractors on the, if there's any questions that they have. And then on, uh, November the twenty-third, we would receive bids, take those under advisement. And then on December seventh, assuming that all the bids come in fine, that it's a responsible and, um, responsive contractor. On December the seventh, we would award the contract. And then sometime in January of twenty-one, you'd start the project. And by the end of twenty-one, you would be completed with the overall renovation part of the project. So that's, um, something that Ron, the mayor, a lot of other people have been working several months on. Done a whole lot of drawings, a whole lot of, um, calculations and determinations on a lot of things. Kind of summed up in about fifteen minutes. Um, like Eric said, we could talk about this for hours. Um, but does anyone have any questions of where we are at this point in time? Any comments on anything that we've said tonight? Further responses to it.
Well, I guess, maybe not, just more of a comment if we're talking about a complete relocation for basically here. Is that something where?
Yeah, so that was part of what I was going to talk about too, and I can get into that in a moment. Um, so what we've sort of proposed to do, um, and I've got to have some approval from you all, um, but the county, with the sheriff's vacation of Washington School, has proposed that he could move in there. Um, we're working on a price for rent and all of that, and it all comes together in kind of a big number. But yeah, so we would probably hire somebody like Maddoxes to move us. Um, they would come in, take our stuff. The tech people who use would help us with the technology move. Josh Tressler could fit in the loop, uh, getting us set up on the network that's in the Washington School already. Um, the county has a very reasonable price. Um, I believe that we could offer to them for rent for the year. Um, it pretty much is utility cost, what it cost them to maintain the building, divided by square feet that we would occupy. Um, I think all the pieces are in place for that. We have the ability to use the money that you all had set aside in the twenty-twenty budget. So it was under the KUCAP development fund, I believe. We can pay those bills with that money because it was dedicated for this project. That's how we enlisted DLZ services earlier this year. So yeah, I think we can do all of that. Um, you don't have to make any true decisions until bids come in. But we've invested substantial amounts of money to get us this far. And I even have the conversations officially with the county, um, the movers, and all of those kinds of conversations about timelines and about prices. And I can share those if you're interested. Um, I'm assuming you'd be interested, but whatever team's telling you, right? So yeah, we do have a place to go. Um, I am trying to accommodate all of our tenants. I've talked with them all about it and really kind of catching up with that. But I'm hopeful that we can take all of them with us as not to go to the mouth of the street and benefit ourselves. I suspect it will probably cost us, including rent, moving, all the stuff sort of associated with that, about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we had talked to several hundreds of thousands to stay in. Want to give like a ten seconds analysis about why that is?
So part of it is, is that we've been involved in a lot of renovation projects. And typically what might happen, it might be longer than ten seconds here, but, um, typically what would happen is, is we would probably at least have to divide this off into two phases of a project. Maybe three, depends on one little area. Um, but we would take one wing of the building, move everybody out of that wing, move them over here somewhere. Okay? Then they would go in and they would renovate that. So think about a demolition contractor that's going to come in, take down all the ceilings, if there's any kind of pipes, whatever, take all of that down. He's going to do half the project, he's going to leave for six months, then he's going to come back and do it again. Okay? Just the demobilization for that stuff, it just adds up to quite a bit of money. Let alone all the frustrations that you might have if you're in the building with all the noise, the dust. I mean, regardless of what kind of protection walls that we put up, um, it happens. It's part of construction with that. So now we're done with one side of the building. Everybody on this side then moves over there, okay, into that space. And then we renovate this part of the building with that. And so then, once this side is done, then y'all move back here. Uh, that's on this side, you know, the court treasure and the, um, the city engineer plan and utilities or like, they move back to this side of the project. It takes extra time because one contractor coming in doing demos, I'm just using that as an example, just demo all the ceilings. You can't say that he's going to demo everything in X amount of time, leave, come back and do it in X amount of time versus the, if he would do it all at once, it would be a shorter amount of time. And so general conditions, it's the overhead, it's the profit for the contractors, the mo, the de-mo's, that adds up to quite a bit of money. And quite a bit more than what it would cost for you to, uh, leave the building and then to come back approximately a year later.
Have you looked at a comparison between? You're doing this building, building new?
Yeah, we had talked about that. Um, the new price per square foot, um, always out of the water.
We, we are doing a similar type project and it's well over three hundred dollars per square foot. About thirty-three thousand five hundred, thirty-three five, thirty-three six, it's right in that range. Plus the tunnel. It'll be off the top, it's not good a square foot yourself. Even at two hundred dollars per foot, that's.
We had a really long discussion as well about, you know, the building. We moved in in oh-six. Um, the HVAC system was done in ninety-seven. We believe the roof, or at least part of the roof was done at that time as well. So we're, we're looking at, you know, items that are twenty-plus years old. And with the newer technologies, we believe we can do that even better. As far as we can tell, in addition to just sort of minor maintenance, we haven't invested that much money in the building since they, um, all the finishes are original. Ninety percent of the furniture is probably original. Um, obviously the roof, the HVAC. I forget, I told you guys the amount of money we spent on the HVAC system last year earlier. Make sure you have that number in front of me. But, uh, it's kind of a problem.
And I think one thing that's fair is also your, your new infrastructure would be much higher efficiency than what your items like you have now.
Once we talk about support funding the project, we're going to have a bond?
Yeah, so I talked to greedy financial about that as well. Sort of, we sent them, Eric had worked with them a little bit, sent them the numbers. Um, they had budgeted out this plus the moving cost, plus the bond fees. Um, and then prorated it out over twenty years for the bond. Um, we discussed something lower, but what we're planning to do is just a general fund obligation bond. No taxes, no new tags, no tax levy, nothing like that. Comes out of already existing revenue streams. They ran that scenario out, uh, twenty-twenty-three is the first year to take effect through twenty-twenty-seven rate, I believe. And it is not an issue over that amount of time. And we do have the ability, should we choose, we can go back and include DLZ's fees, the moving fees and anything else that we pay for outside of construction into that bond. And they accounted for that too. We could choose not to do that and, you know, use cash and capital. Likely committed when we hired DLZ, likely might commit to move, but we can go back and recapture that. Brandon just has to keep track of it for us. If we'd like to cash back.
How much potential funding is available compared to that?
We as a community were awarded three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, how much we can use of that depends. We've spent some this year during the COVID. They are becoming more loose in what they're allowing purchasing with it. But communities have used it to purchase the touch-free sinks, um, doors, pieces like that. I think I gave him a number of, let's shoot for two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand. Part of that, and that's why he said potential, uh, that's a good word for this. Part of that is the feds continuing to change. Part of that is the feds continue to change the requirements surrounding it. And when we get to the end of the year, we have to have spent the money. And so there's a lot of discussion about what does spend the money, does it mean contracted? Because that's how we do conferences, as long as we contracted for the expenses. Or do we have to have a receipt for that? It's not millions of dollars, but it is something. And unless the feds change the way and what we can spend it on, we have just gone out and loaned four hundred thousand dollars that we didn't plan on spending this year. We have a big pot of it left, so we're trying to maybe absorb it into something useful, if you will. So we're happy to answer questions or other comments or concerns. But what we're kind of looking for tonight is an agreement, nothing legal and official, for DLZ to go ahead and publish a request for bids, so that we can stick to this timeline. You'll notice Monday, November twenty-third is not your typical meeting night or works. So we would have a special meeting for that, to receive the bids, take them under advisement, come back to the December seventh meeting. If you all agree to do that, my intention on our end is to...